Who said that? Oh, Lord.
Let me do that over again. Good evening. This is the 28th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Councils now called to order. If you have your cell phones, please put them on vibrate or turn them off. Tonight invocation will be led by Mr. Jerry Butner. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is it Butner?
Thank you. As we begin the council session this evening, let us remember the students and staff of Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, and to all those in our city that lost their lives to gun violence. Let us recognize as a model and inspiration the youth of our great city and nation. We shall stand with them in solidarity for peace and justice. They speak truth to power. We shall also heed the voices of the voiceless, whose ideas and thoughts are to be heard and respected, to recognize the dignity of all peoples. We hear in Psalm 34 from King David where he praises God's justice and mercy. The psalmist speaks so eloquently, God hears the cry of the poor. And as Jesus proclaims in the Gospel of Matthew, "Whatever you do to the least of my sisters and brothers, you do unto me." May the deliberations of this body always have in their minds and hearts the voiceless of our city and those most in need. To quote Gandhi, "A nation's greatness is measured by how it treats its most vulnerable." What makes our city great is its diversity and openness to all, not just those of wealth and power, but to the powerless and the vulnerable. In closing, let us hear from Hebrew Scripture, the prophet Micah, "What does the Lord require of us? To act justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God."
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roles of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry Slyfer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Rising Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Ms. Jackie L. Schroeder, SAFE Stop Abuse of Elders.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for inviting me today to talk with you about elder abuse in our city. My name is Jackie Schroeder. I'm the Director of SAFE Stop Abuse of Elders, a program of HANA, an agency that responds to abuse and trauma. Elder abuse occurs in all communities regardless of socioeconomics, race, religion, gender, or culture. When we're talking about elder abuse, we're speaking about an intentional act or failure to act. Regardless of the types of abuse, whether it's physical, sexual, emotional, passive neglect, willful deprivation, stalking, or financial exploitation, all elder abuse is hallmark by an expectation of trust, trust of the abuser by the victim. Elder abuse is different from domestic violence. Elders can't just walk away, go to live on their own, or get a job and start their lives over. They are dependent on their abusers. 66% of abusers of elders who live in the community are adult children and grandchildren. A victim of elder abuse is 300% more likely to die and more than twice as likely to use a hospital emergency room than an elder who is not mistreated. In our city, lives approximately 185,591 adults who are 60 and older. Current data indicates that an under-reported one of every 10 is a victim of elder abuse. This number does not include people living in nursing homes. So how do these numbers translate? Potentially, today, there are 18,559 elders being abused right in our own backyard. And the number may actually be significantly higher, given that for every one case that's reported, it's suspected that another 23 cases go unreported. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a public health and human rights crisis. With the silvered tsunami upon us, we can expect this number to increase exponentially by 2030, and we must prepare now. So in 2013, with a grant from the Maryland Department of Aging, SAFE Stop Abuse of Elders was born. Case in point, a woman contacted us saying her 78-year-old cousin, Mrs. B., was despondent and incontinent, left in her home by her husband from early morning to late at night during a string of 100-degree days with maggots in the refrigerator. So she took her cousin to the hospital. Mrs. B. was discharged right back to her own home. It was then that Mrs. B.'s cousin contacted SAFE. SAFE Stop Abuse of Elders is currently the only program in Baltimore, providing comprehensive elder abuse intervention and prevention education services. One unique feature of SAFE is a short-term temporary shelter in a long-term care facility. Mrs. B. was admitted to that nursing home and that shelter and protected from further harm. Presently, we're building a community-based elder abuse shelter. It's a senior-friendly apartment. It'll be ready this spring, but much more elder abuse shelter is needed. Elder abuse cases are complex and costly and necessitate carefully coordinated services that require out-of-the-box thinking. We've discovered that when many victims don't fit the mandates of adult protective services, there aren't other services or any system in place to meet their needs in our city. We wanted to change that. So in 2017, through a federal grant, we formed a partnership with Maryland Legal Aid. We now have a full-time attorney and paralegal in the SAFE office. Also, in a groundbreaking partnership with the Baltimore City Police, the City Office of the State's Attorney, the Division of Aging and Care Services in the Health Department, and the Baltimore City District and Circuit Courts of Maryland, we were just awarded a three-year, $328,000 federal grant from the Office of Violence Against Women for enhanced training and services to end abuse in later life. This grant links Baltimore City with the nationwide elder justice movement, and the impact of this effort will be a collaborative, system-wide response to elder abuse victims. It will keep city elders safe. We have tremendous opportunity through this federal grant, and we need elder abuse to be on your radar. We need your support of the grant partners' efforts. On June 5th, we'll be hosting our second annual Safeguarding Our Seniors Breakfast at DLA Piper in commemoration of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and we hope you will join us. Elders deserve our honor and respect. It's our responsibility, all of our responsibility, to keep them safe. SAFE Stop Abuse of Elders can't do it alone. Our elders need you, and SAFE needs you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that information because we hear quite a bit about elders being abused in some of these homes that they are residing where people supposed to be taking care of them. So we do get these complaints about elder abuse. So it's good to know that we got groups out there that's doing the work to make sure that they are represented. It is the council custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Seconded by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of generalizing the invocation say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the ayes have it. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from February 5th City Council Meeting is on councilmembers' desks.
That motion to approve the journal. Mosted by Councilman Scott, seconded by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the journal is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA 18-0131, Wilbury Cunningham, Member Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 14.
Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 18-0193, Food Desert Incentive Areas Expenditure Requirements for Tax Credit, for the purpose of establishing a new minimum expenditure requirement for substantially renovated supermarkets that is lower than the expenditure requirement for newly constructed supermarkets and generally relating to the qualifications for a tax credit granted to certain supermarkets in a food desert incentive area. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0194, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot 347-357 North Calvert Street and 352 and 360 Davis Street, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions the establishment, maintenance, and operations of a parking lot on the properties known as 347-357 North Calvert Street, Block 0584, Lots 004, 005, 007, 008, and 009, and 352 and 360 Davis Street, Block 0584, Lots 016 and 011, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat. Sponsor, Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution introduced.
City Council Resolution 18-0068R, Moving Baltimore City to Paperless Paychecks, for the purpose of calling on the Department of Finance and the Department of Human Resources to ensure that fiscal 2019 payroll negotiations emphasize security, efficiency, and waste reduction, including a process for electronic timekeeping and an opt-in feature for paper paycheck advices, and to issue an RFP for competitive bids for Baltimore City's payroll in anticipation of 2020 payroll contract negotiations. Sponsor, sponsors, co-endorsey, Scott, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Burnett, Clark, Rising Costello, Milton.
Please note, Council President is co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is 2018, and yet we are still receiving our...
Excuse me, Councilman. Please note that Councilwoman Snead is a co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors? Councilman Slyfer as co-sponsor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It is 2018, and yet we are still receiving our paychecks on paper. Most systems have moved to paperless paychecks, or at the very least, an opt-out function, and yet there is no opt-out for those of us that work in City Hall. We, as a council, have made the environment our priority, and we need to clean our own house. So what this resolution does is ask the Finance Department, in their renegotiating of their contract, that they move toward a paperless system. It would save money. It will save trees. And so I thank my colleagues and you, Mr. President, for your co-sponsorship, and I hope that we can move to paperless paychecks. Therefore, I suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Seconded by Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged the rules suspended. Chair recognizes Chairman Cohen.
Move the resolution.
Seconded by Council Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 18-0068R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 18-0069R, Requests for State Action Require Appropriate Criteria for State Center redevelopment, for the purpose of urging the General Assembly to pass and the Governor to sign HB 1286 in order to protect the participation and planning process of 12 community organizations during the past 12 years related to state center and to support redevelopment of state center that includes both the active and meaningful participation of the surrounding communities and the values and needs of those communities as key components. Sponsors, Costello, President Young, Clark, Scott, Dorsey, Bullock, Henry, Pinkett, Burnett, Rising Costello, Cohen, Middleton.
Chair recognizes, please note that Councilwoman Snead as a co-sponsor. Councilman Slyfer is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. The state center development was a $1.5 billion project in the 11th district, which houses 3,000 state employees, would have provided for a number of amenities in reconnecting neighborhoods that have been physically segregated since the 1950s as a result of the state's development there, including 80,000 square-foot grocery store. Delegate Cheryl Glenn, along with Delegate Antonio Hayes and a number of others, have introduced legislation in the House which sets forth criteria by which state center could be developed in the future, including but not limited to engagement with the State Center Neighborhood Alliance, which is a group of 12 neighborhood associations immediately surrounding state center, which have worked tirelessly for over the past decade and coming up with a very significant community benefits agreement with the proposed developer. Unfortunately, that project has been stalled as a result of actions taken by the Governor's administration in Annapolis. And my hope is that our colleagues at the state level in Annapolis are able to pass this to hopefully push the Governor to get out of that litigation and hopefully move forward with a project at state center that works for the surrounding communities. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support, and I would like to suspend the rules to ask for immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, Chair recognizes Chairman.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for immediate adoption of Resolution 18-0069R.
Seconded by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of adopting the Resolution 18-0069R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, this resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Slyfer.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that I can introduce a resolution from the floor.
Seconded by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of suspending rules allow for introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced as Resolution 18-0070R. The clerk will read the resolution and to the record.
City Council Resolution 18-0070R, informational hearing, crisis preparedness and safety in our schools, for the purpose of calling on representatives from Baltimore City Public Schools, Police, the Baltimore Police Department, the Fire Department, and Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to appear before the council to discuss emergency preparedness and safety in our schools in the wake of the horrific shootings in Parkland, Florida. Sponsor, Slyfer.
Please note, Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Any more co-sponsors? Councilwoman Clark, Councilman Vice Singer, Stokes, all members? All members. Chair recognizes Councilman Slyfer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you know, public safety is my number-one priority and many of our number-one priorities, and there's nothing more important that we can do than to ensure the safety of our children. And after the horrific events that have unfolded across the country, in schools and elsewhere, I think it's important that we, as a city, can call for a hearing to bring all the agencies and all the necessary first responders to the table to have an open discussion, a public hearing, to go through what the processes and protocols we have in place and what we can do to make sure that we're doing everything we can to protect the children. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules to permit the introduction of a resolution from the floor.
Seconded by Councilman Burnett, all those in favor of suspending rules and Nelson hearings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the few bright spots coming out of Washington lately is the creation by Congress of opportunity zones. Opportunity zones are low-income census tracts that each state is allowed to designate, which the federal government will incentivize private investment in those census tracts. This resolution calls upon the state of Maryland to develop an open and transparent process for how the Governor will determine which census tracts will become opportunity zones. We can do up to one quarter of all of the low-income census tracts in the state, and as of the point where this resolution was requested, the state had not announced any type of open process for determining who would get opportunity zones and who would not. I would also like to move to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorable.
Oh, she got to read the resolution into the record. We jumped ahead.
City Council Resolution 18-0071R, Requests for State Action Designating Federal Opportunity Zones, for the purpose of calling on the Governor to create an open process which will allow for comprehensive...
I have to go back. Okay. It was seconded by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of suspending rules allow for the introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 18-0071R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 18-0071R, Requests for State Action Designating Federal Opportunity Zones, for the purpose of calling on the Governor to create an open process which will allow for comprehensive and transparent consideration of which census tracts in the state of Maryland should be designated as opportunity zones participating in the new federal tax deferral program intended to spur private investment in underserved communities. Sponsors, Henry.
Chair recognizes Henry.
So I move to suspend the rules to permit immediate adoption.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, the rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution favorably.
Seconded by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please note the Council President abstained. This resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. It's their motion to approve the consent calendar. Seconded by Councilman Scott, all those in favor approving the consent calendar, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Vice President Milton. You have something?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to extend four privileges to your special guests, Christina Edwards, mother of Darrell Edwards.
Seconded by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of extending four privileges to the guest, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, my guest may take the floor.
I would like to read my remarks first. There are many things that come to mind when you think of Baltimore's Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School. You might think of the fact that Dunbar is one of two schools in Maryland's P-Tech program and has partnered with Johns Hopkins to offer students health science degrees in areas of concentration like health information technology, respiratory care, and surgical technology. You might also think of the fact that Dunbar produced world-class athletes and is home to the number of notable alumni. You'll be forgiven for immediately thinking about the school's association with NASCAR. Thankfully, that'll soon change as the world learns that one of Baltimore's own, Darrell Edwards, a 2010 graduate of Dunbar High, made history February 18th by becoming the first African-American PIT crew member to win the Daytona 500 as a part of Austin Dillon's No. 3 car team on NASCAR's Top Circuit. Baltimore is extremely proud of Darrell and lifts up your success as a living example to all the young boys and girls in our city. Your wildest dreams are more than possible, and as proof, Darrell Edwards is a shining example. Darrell is back to work in North Carolina with his PIT crew, preparing for the team's next race, and could not be here with us today. But we are fortunate to be joined by his mother, Christine Edwards, who will accept a framed resolution from the City Council on his behalf. Ms. Edwards, congratulations to your family, and please note that Darrell has made this city proud. Is that the dad? And we'll be joined by his dad. We don't normally hear all the good news about what our young people are doing, but we have young people that are making a mark and doing great things around the country. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to extend floor privileges to your special guests, the volunteers who assisted in Puerto Rico in their recovery from Hurricane Maria.
Seconded by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of extending floor privileges to my guest, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encouraged, my guest may take the floor.
Throughout the corridors of City Hall and various municipal buildings that make up city government, there are numerous unsung heroes that ensure the daily operation... I'm way ahead. Trying to get out of here because we've got to get to Annapolis. So I got to just slow down. Okay. Back in September of last year, fellow American citizens in Puerto Rico were hit by Hurricane Maria. The storm itself and ensuring aftermath is widely considered to be the worst storm and natural disaster in the history of Puerto Rico. In January of this year, a group of concerned citizens and law enforcement from Baltimore and nearby cities banded together to take part in a humanitarian trip to Puerto Rico to assist our fellow citizens in their recovery efforts. The humanitarian efforts included the donation of roughly 750 toys to children in the Puerto Rican cities of Aracibo, Cialis, and Utoardo. Y'all got to get these names straight, okay? The donations, a variety of other home goods and foods were donated via the Convoy of Hope Program. Tonight, we have extended floor privileges to these humanitarian groups to acknowledge them for their efforts to help those in need. Ceremonial resolution will be presented to Juan Carlos Nunez, Holland Town Business Association President. Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, raise his hand. Okay. Lieutenant Stephen Olson, Baltimore City Police Department. Sergeant Melvin Gerado, Baltimore City Police Department. Detective Miguel Rodriguez, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Miguel Martinez, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Melvin Gonzalez, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Stephen Quavis, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Vincent Class, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Neil Worrell, Baltimore City Police Department. Officer Edward Lopez Sr., Philadelphia Police Department. Officer Sammy Sanchez, Philadelphia Police Department. Sergeant Antonio Hernandez, Fort Lee Police Department. Let's give them another hand for helping those in need. They deserve a big hand because when Mr. Trump refused to do what he needed to do for Puerto Rico, which have American citizens there, our police department and our business community stepped up to the plate to help Puerto Rico. So as Puerto Rico go, so as the United States go. They are part of this country, as one of our territories, and we need to remember that and make sure that this country take care of them. They are taxpaying citizens, just like everybody else. So again, I want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the City Council, citizens of Baltimore. Thank you for a job well done. I want to come down and take a picture right quick. I want to come down and take a picture right quick. Yeah, I said I have to slow down. Okay. Council President, recognize Council Vice President Middleton.
Mr. President, I move to extend floor privileges To your special guests.
Second by Councilman Reisinger.
Lawyer Lassiter and Eloise Hudson.
I really got to slow down. I hate to be in a rush. Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of extending these four privileges To my guests, say aye. Those opposed nay, the most encouraged. Throughout the corridors of City Hall And various municipal buildings That make up city government, There are numerous unsung heroes And ensure the daily operation Of city service continue day in and day out. They are unsung heroes In every agency, department, and building. Each day, these unsung heroes show up And put in the honest day work On behalf of citizens of Baltimore. Well, tonight, I am saddened to announce The departure of two unsung heroes Who will be leaving the city government family. Tonight, I would like to acknowledge Gloria Laster And Eloise Hudson For their dedicated service Towards the operation and maintenance Of Baltimore's historic City Hall. The hard work and extra effort exhibited by Gloria and Eloise Have helped to make City Hall The true building of the people. And I want to personally thank you all. I see you every morning coming through the building, Cleaning and wiping down stuff That don't even need to be wiped down. To make sure that this City Hall Is a place where everybody can come And see the cleanliness of this building. And I just want to thank you For your dedicated service. Any council members want to say anything? And I had to force them to come in Because they didn't want anything. They just wanted to go. And I told them, no, they've been here long enough For us to honor them For their dedicated service To the citizens of Baltimore. So again, let's give them another hand. Chair recognize Councilman Scott. You've been raising your hand all night.
Mr. President, I make a move To read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles For the remainder of the hearing, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Second of appointments.
EA 18-0120, John F. Chalmers, Bureau Head, Bureau Solid Waste District Five.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held hearings On February the 14th and the 21st. I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Slifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0121, Rashida Sees, Member Sustainability Commission District Seven.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0124, John Quinn, Member Sustainability Commission.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0126, Frank Coakley, Member Board of Trustees For the Fired and Police Employees Retirement System, District Five.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Slifer. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA 18-0128, Darryl De Souza, Commissioner Baltimore Police Department, District 11.
Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. Please note that Councilman Dorsey has acknowledged This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17...
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanted to say something. Chair recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Over the course of the last several weeks, Over two one-on-one meetings And the course of the public hearing That was held last week, I had a lot of opportunity to speak with Commissioner De Souza. I heard answers to a lot of questions About the ins and outs of policing as we know it. And I heard a vow to do things We've always done, but somehow better. While we can clearly acknowledge That this new overt commitment To not be corrupt Or to not violate civil rights Is certainly an improved rhetoric. Fundamentally, it's a commitment to more of the same. Our very best efforts to put forth great leaders And well-intentioned, well-stated plans Has really only resulted In the need to fire and replace One commissioner after another. I believe this is because Our expectations of the police department To make sustainable changes in our city Are unrealistic and misplaced. I believe, as do many others, We need an entirely new envisioning of policing. And that's not what I see here. Myself and others of my colleagues Asked critical questions To try to understand his values and worldview About BPD as a local authority, About the war on drugs, About transparency of internal affairs documents, The contract in relationship to the police union. And I heard no answers to any of these questions. I just, just as I received no request, Received no response in my request To see Commissioner's personal and internal affairs documents. And so, in all these cases, I just really have to conclude That he either doesn't have the critical kind of opinion That I believe he should have at the top, Or that he has one that I don't like, And that's why I'm voting no. Thank you for allowing me to explain that.
Thank you. But Councilman, you also know That we cannot look at personnel records Or medical records of any city employee. So your comments are, you know, taken in stride, But you know for a fact that we can't do that. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0171, Five and Dime Historic District.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee Met on February 13th to consider two bills. We will be moving them both favorable without amendments. I move this bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most in this, approve this bill, move to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0172, Howard Street Commercial Historic District.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill, move to third reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0117, Food Service Facilities, Polystyrene Foam Products.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to ask To give the floor to my colleague, Councilman John Bullock.
Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. President. I do really appreciate the opportunity To move this legislation forward. We had a great hearing within our committee. I'm very thankful to the co-sponsors of this bill. Quite frankly, we've been interested in the environment, The effect of polystyrene, And also trying to get it out of our waste stream. Thankfully, we had not only co-sponsors, But folks in committee who were also supportive. So I thank the council president for being amenable. I thank some of my colleagues for being amenable as well. We know that this has been attempted In previous administrations, But now we're able to move forward with it. So again, I thank you all For being partners on this legislation. I appreciate the opportunity. And I know that there are some amendments That the chair can also talk about as well.
Thank you, Chairman. Chair recognize Councilman Costello. Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill on February 6th. We returned on February 13th for a work session. There are two amendments on my colleague's desk. One which extends the effective date of this To 18 months from 90 days. And the second, which has to do with a compromise That was made, that Councilman Bullock And yourself, Mr. President, And I worked out with folks from industry That takes care of food service facilities. At this time, I'd like to move both amendments.
Second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor approving this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Chairman Bullock. All those in favor of approving this bill As amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. This bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello. Oh, I'm sorry. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0152, Food Service Facilities, Healthy Beverages For Children's Meals.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to ask the president To give the floor to my colleague, Councilman Brandon Scott, Sponsor of the bill.
Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their support. This bill is simply about the future of Baltimore. Our young people, we know The amount of sugar-free drinks that they take in, Particularly in our low-income neighborhoods In East and West Baltimore And in Park Heights where I grew up. This is about providing better opportunities And options for our young people. We know that they don't have the access To healthy drinks and healthy food. Now, we're going to try to force that issue. I would actually also thank all of my colleagues For their support, but also for the folks That worked on this issue. Akil Patterson and the rest of the folks At Sugar-Free Kids And the Baltimore City Health Department For their great work.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to extend my thanks Not only to Akil Patterson, But also Baltimore City Health Department on this bill. There are two amendments on my colleague's desk. The first deals with removing language That was in a preamble In the original version of the bill. And the second one has to do with amendments That were agreed upon That Councilman Scott helped out with In dealing with some folks from industry As well as prepackaged food items. At this time, I'd like to move both amendments.
Second by Chairman Scott. All those in favor approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I forgot to mention, we held our first hearing on this On January 30th, and we reconvene on February 13th For a work session. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Chairman Scott. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill moves to February. Did I hear somebody say something? Somebody say something? Labor Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0170, City Officials' Residency Requirements.
Chair recognize Chairman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. This committee held a hearing On Monday, February the 12th, 2018. There is a floor amendment, And the copy should be on all members' desks. This amendment clarifies who is affected by the bill. It states by being grandfathered in, Current employees, at-will employees. I move the amendment forward.
Second by Councilman Scott. Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor approving this amendment, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion is approve this bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most encourage this bill moves to third reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0105, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion Of a Single Family Dwelling Unit To Two Dwelling Units In the R8 Zoning District, Variances 2428 Drew Hill Avenue.
Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move to finding the facts on this bill.
Hold on for one minute. Thank you. I'm sorry. Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to finding the facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most approve the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognize Vice President Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Not Vice President Reisinger. Chairman Reisinger.
She didn't catch that.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0121, Res zoning 300 block of East 25th and a Half Street.
Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move to finding the facts.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most approve the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman, Chairman Stokes. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0150, Zoning prohibiting crude oil terminals.
Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, We had a two-and-a-half-hour hearing on this bill. I can say it was very informative and very emotional. There's an amendment to this bill. It's on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The most approve the bill is amended. Chair recognize Chairman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Please note that... Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. While I appreciate what my colleagues Who sponsored this bill were trying to accomplish, I'm compelled to vote no for this For the simple fact that this bill In no way, shape, or form Actually addresses the issue shape, or form actually addresses the issue of the transport of crude oil throughout Baltimore City. What this bill does do, uh, is it prevents the expansion of existing crude oil port terminals, uh, and it prohibits, uh, the creation of new crude oil port terminals, uh, in the port of Baltimore. By enacting this ban, uh, we are, uh, further damaging, uh, the port's ability to be competitive, uh, not only on the eastern seaboard, uh, but throughout the nation and internationally. Uh, the Port of Baltimore has been here for three hundred and twelve years. It employs thousands of people, many of which live in my district, and it accounts for approximately one-third of the economic output of the entire region, about fifty-nine billion out of a hundred and eighty-one billion dollars per year. And again, while I applaud, uh, what my colleagues are trying to do, I believe that there was a different way that this could have been done, uh, and with that, I vote no. Thank you.
Chair recognize Councilwoman Clark. Uh, we're not gonna debate the bill. The vote already has been taken. There's, hold on, there's one vote that says no, and the vote is affirmative. So, we're not gonna stand here and debate this bill again. It already done passed.
President, it has not yet been announced, and I don't want, I just would request, even if it's just by yes, no, I would ask for, for a roll call. We have not had an announcement of the vote, and I wanna be sure we know what it is.
Roll call.
Thank you.
President Young?
Yes.
President Young, yes.
There's only one no vote.
Councilman Cohen?
Chair recognize Councilman Cohen.
Mr. President, Baltimore is blessed to have one of the greatest ports in all the country. The port is an enormous economic driver for our region and our economy, and I feel blessed to have it in my district. Um, I believe we are uniquely positioned to be the coastal hub for renewable energy activities. Uh, we passed a resolution in this council, uh, a few months ago that said the following: "We know that climate change impacts are felt first and worst by vulnerable populations, which exacerbates inequality. We reject treating people and the planet as resources to be exploited. Freight trains carrying the volatile Balkan crude oil threaten a hundred and sixty-five thousand people who live in the blast zone in Baltimore City and facilitate the extraction and combustion of some of the most climate-polluting oil on the planet. Baltimore City will limit the development and expansion of facilities that handle crude oil while working with port authorities and railway companies to increase transparency and accountability for shipments." Mr. President, I would remind all of us that we all signed this resolution together. We were all sponsors. The time to push for a twenty-first century clean, safe economy is now. I vote yes.
Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Slifer?
Yes.
Councilman Slifer, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett, yes. Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger, yes. Councilwoman Costello?
No.
Councilwoman Costello, no. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes.
This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one five five, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R seven zoning district, twenty-four fifteen West Lexington Street.
Chair recognize Chairman Vasinger.
Mr. President, I move this, I move to send this bill back to committee.
Second by Councilman Bullock, all those in favor of sending this bill back to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This bill is in the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one five seven, Zoning, Conditional Use Banquet Hall, First Floor Area of thirty-three, three-three-three West Austin Street.
Chair recognize Chairman Vasinger.
Mr. President, uh, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognize Chairman Vasinger.
Mr. President, this bill has amendment to, on my colleague's desk. I move the, uh, the amendment.
Second by Chairman Costello, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill is amended. Chair recognize Vice, uh, Chairman Vasinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Chairman Costello, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero zero nine two, Morgan State University, Approving Application for Designation as Rise Zone Granting Enhanced Local Property Tax Credit.
Chair recognize Chairman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. We heard five bills on that day, and this was the, the first of the five. The committee heard the bill on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Uh, total support from the committee, uh, total support from community, and it was basically about the approval of a partner in the state rise zone program that will allow Morgan State University to develop the Northwood Shopping Center, create jobs, and foster new business growth for the area. Um, it was a favorable committee report, and I move the bill favorable.
Uh, second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Abstain.
Please note that, um, Henry and, and Dorsey abstain. This resolution moves to third reader.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one five nine, Sale of Property, One zero zero one North Smallwood Street.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, the committee heard this bill on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Uh, this property is part of the Acme Business Complex Redevelopment Project in the ninth District of West Baltimore. Uh, the committee report was favorable. I move the bill favorable.
Um, second by Chairman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one six zero, Sale of Property, Two one two zero West Lafayette Avenue.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The committee heard this bill also on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. The property is also part of the Acme Business Complex Redevelopment Project in the ninth District of West Baltimore. The committee report was favorable. I move the bill favorable.
Uh, second by Chairman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one six one, Sale of Property, Two two zero one Moser Street.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Uh, the committee heard this bill on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. This property is also part of the Acme Business Complex Redevelopment Project in the ninth District of West Baltimore. The committee report was favorable. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Chairman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one six two, Sale of Property, Block Six two five four D, Lot Zero two one.
Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
The committee heard the bill on February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. The Pompe Company is proposing a one million dollar expansion over five years. The development will include the replacement of Janey Park at a cost of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The redevelopment of the site allows for retention of an international business and will increase the tax base and create five to ten jobs. The committee report was favorable.
Uh, second by Councilman Bullock, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passes.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one five six, City Property Naming, The Southwestern Plateau of Wyman Park Dell's Main Park Avenue to be the Harriet Tubman Grove at Wyman Park Dell. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one six five, City Property Renaming Madison Park to Nathan C. Erby Junior Park. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill One seven dash zero one six eight, Special Benefits District, Be More Safe Places. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill Eighteen dash zero one seven six, Allegating and Greening Standards. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill One eight dash zero one seven eight, Indoor Smoking, Hookah Lounges. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Burnett, Clark, um, Middleton, and Pinkett, this bill is approved. Committee announcements. Um, Chair recognize Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February the twenty-eighth, beginning at ten AM to view the following nominations. Sustainability Commission, Michael Ferbus, Anes Robb, Charlotte James, and Avis Ransom. For the Board of Trustees for the Fire and Police Retirement System, Benjamin DeBois. And the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals, Wilbur E. B. O. Cunningham. Thank you.
Chair recognize, um, Chairman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to announce a date, uh, change in the date for a hearing. Um, this is regarding City Council Bill Eighteen zero one seven nine. Um, this is the ordinance residential lease requirements required disclosures that was, uh, sponsored by Councilman Burnett. He has requested that we reschedule the hearing that was initially scheduled for February twenty-seventh to now be on Tuesday, March twenty-seventh at two PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Vasinger.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing with Bill Seventeen dash zero one zero two on March twenty-first at one PM in the council chambers. This is, uh, Complete Streets. The, uh, committee will hold a hearing with Bill Seventeen dash zero one zero six on Wednesday, Wednesday, April eleventh at one PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning located at thirty-six zero one through thirty-six zero five Park Heights Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing with Bill Seventeen dash zero one zero seven on April eleventh at one oh five PM. This is a zoning conditional use retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales located thirty-six oh one through thirty-six oh five Park Heights Avenue. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill Seventeen dash zero one eight two on Wednesday, April the eighteenth at one PM in the council chambers.